Good afternoon, everybody. It is the last meeting of the year. How about that?
Thank you.
The time is three o'clock. Meeting is now called to order. Roll call.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Here.
Councilman Charles Watts.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence Webb.
Here.
Councilman Terry Platt.
Here.
And Councilman Lee Lushy.
Here.
All right. We are good to go. All present. First item is number three. Consideration of the minutes from previous work session of December 5th, 2017. You should find those in your packet. Give you a minute to look at those. Sure.
To mention that the chief, is that a structure fire?
Oh, yeah, I got it now. You said he'd be a little late. No problem. We'll just come back to him if that's all right with you.
Oh, yes, sir.
My question is...
A second.
Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Very good. The minutes from the previous work session of December 5th are approved. Let's see. Mr. Platt, do you want me to go with my other presentation and hold up on the chief's?
Yes, sir, if you would.
Sure. What I'd like to do at this time is introduce, and let him speak. Mr. Shane Strager is running for our House seat 102. And for those of you who don't know him, this is your chance to meet him. And he's going to just say a little bit about himself and...
Just in Alabama?
That's what they tell me.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Made you blessed to be here. Appreciate y'all having me for a minute. But Shane Strager, I've worked with the Sheriff's Department out here for 15 years. I'm currently the Police Chief over in the City of Simms. Live up in Suternale. Spent a lot, a lot of time out here with the Sheriff's Department stationed out in Simms, at the substation as head of the CID. Running for the Alabama House Representative seat 102, Republican ticket. And we'll get kicked off sure enough hard here in January. But just wanted to kind of thank y'all for any opportunity and y'all consider me and check me out. I've been a volunteer, worked for our community for over 25 years in law enforcement, firefighting, and EMS, and just helping our community and doing what I can for our community. My wife's the counselor up at the high school in Suternale. We have six kids, so we've got a big family. Getting close to retirement in law enforcement, and I want to continue to do something to help our community and help people. Appreciate y'all keeping in line. Anything I could do for the City of Simms, I'd definitely be blessed to help. Just got back from the FBI graduate of the FBI National Academy, three months school. Been in Quantico, Virginia for three months. And it's an executive leadership school that they offer to the executive law enforcement across the world. There was 225 members from all over the world. They are really privileged to get to do something like that. And we were blessed to have the President and Attorney General Jeff Sessions as our guest speakers. Got to speak with them and great conversation. Look forward to working with them and all the other elected officials that elected them.
All right.
Any questions?
Anyone have a question? Were you there for the big speech?
Yes, I was. Yeah, we were. So that's the first time a President's been at one of those graduations in over 45 years.
Amen.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Why don't we, let's see. We can move on to the financial report, review of checks, hold up for chief. I know he had a structure fire.
It didn't work.
And he should be here soon. So let's go ahead. Let's move on to item five, which is review of checks. Want everybody to take their time to look at all the checks and look at the check summary, look at the checks. We'll finish 5A before we go back to the Public Works Director's report. Take your time.
Mayor, I'm moving to approve the checks.
Clear. Okay. We just discussed them around there. But thank you. We'll vote to approve during the regular meeting. But there are no more questions about checks? Anybody have questions issue? Good. Thank you. Council, is there a reason why we couldn't move into the regular bit and come back to the Public Works Director?
Yes, I don't think she's going to be able to get it going.
They stopped coming up.
Oh, you don't?
I can give it. I don't need it.
Oh, is that all right with you, Terry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead. We've got a computer glitch, imagine that. But we're going to go ahead with paper. Which is the way you do it.
Right. Okay. Thank y'all.
Sure.
Just wanted to give an update on some of the things that we're doing in the city. This is just shortened, abbreviated. First off, the Mopar-McCrory intersection improvement. You may have heard about this project.
I've never heard of that one. That new one?
But anyway, it's been quite controversial. Had a lot of comments, positive and negative. The main thing is, I think the government's first duty is to bring in safety and protect its citizens. The reason for the project was we had a lot of traffic accidents there on that intersection and a lot of conflict points on that center lane. And so the medians are there to protect people from making unsafe turns. And I think that once everything settles down, the traffic signals are back in the works and they're out of the construction zone, we're on a radar system now that's going to, everything's going to improve there. Anyway, the paving is complete, 100 percent. The traffic signs are installed. The new traffic signals are installed as well. The reflective striping and pavement markers are pending asphalt cure time. Takes about two weeks for that asphalt to cure, get back to the correct temperature before they can put any kind of adhesive on the ground. So all the thermoplastic striping and the RPMs, which is around pavement, square pavement markers, those will be around the medians and around all the lanes so that they'll be highly visible at night and during weather issues. The next thing we got going on is the sidewalk project. It was kind of started about the same time as the Mopar-McCrory intersection project. But due to the changing and the widening of the intersection, they had to stop the sidewalks because they didn't want to build them and run over and mess up. So they started back on that this week, as you see, y'all probably saw. But they've poured a little bit more concrete. I think they're about 80 percent done now. So they only lack tying back into the intersection on the north and south side. Once that's done, that project will be complete as well. We've talked about in the past, the Sims resurfacing project. Just finished that. It's about two and a half miles of resurfacing that we did. City funds, Gas Act funds, Morris Hill Drive, Argon Drive, Barton, Daniel Way, Eastwood, Eastwood Court, Red Creek Drive, Red Creek North, Paula and Don were all paved or resurfaced. Project is 100 percent complete, but there's a small punch list with a couple items that are yet to be done. We're holding their money until all that's completed then. Future projects that have already been approved by council. Redstone Drive South and West Drainage and Resurfacing Project. That job will be starting after the holidays. It's already bid. It's already went through all the competitive bid laws. And we had a bid opening and awarded a job to Blade Construction. And the next project in the shoots is Park Avenue Drainage Improvements and Resurfacing. That job was also approved several months ago. Right now, it's a survey and survey and design. So hopefully, by the time the Redstone job finishes, this one will start back up. So we'll have a, try to keep our project going at all times, small project. And these are maintenance issues that have to be done. This is not any kind of new improvements. These are all maintenance, resurfacing, or drainage issues that need to be corrected. Next thing we have, future project, is the library sign. We've talked about it over and over. We had a lot of changes to the design. Bedded it through two committees, so there's some changes there as well. We put the job out to bid last, about two weeks ago. Bids are due back January 12th, so we'll have a bid opening and the city council will be able to select one of the bidders. And we'll go ahead and get that sign built and installed. It's about a six to eight week process from the time they break ground to get everything in. The next thing we have is the fuel tank. And we all talked about this a few weeks ago. A 2,000 gallon regular gasoline fuel tank for emergency situations and to have as everyday use. That is out to bid, and bid's due back February 9th. So hopefully, we'll get some good prices on that. And I'll keep you aware of all that whenever the bid opening happens. We'll have a big discussion on all that. The next project we have in the future is the safe room. We're still in the process of doing that. As you all know, that was going to be out at Lot Road, and we moved it over to the, moved the project over to behind the training complex. So it'll be right there with all the first responders and public works department. I think it's a better fit. But we have to do a resuminal to FEMA, so the suminals are 95 percent complete. So then you just, once everything's submitted, you just wait for FEMA to make a decision. We have a good feeling that, we've been told that everything looks good. The money's there. As long as all the paperwork checks out, we should be good to go. But we have no idea when that's going to, construction will start on that. So it could be, you know, waiting on FEMA, it could be six to eight months before anything happens on that. The next deal on that would be the city will have to pass a resolution agreeing to their share of the funding of the safe room. It's a 75-25, so FEMA would pay 75 and the city pays 25. So that resolution will bring that up probably the next, probably beginning of the year, first or second council meeting in January. The next project is the Phase Two LED street lighting. We talked about this a lot. We've got about 15 streetlights that we're installing. And we talked to Alabama Power today, and the lights were on back order, but they should be here tomorrow. And if they can get enough crews to work before the holidays are over, they'll be in before the end of the year. If not, it may be the first week of January. So we should see a lot of new streetlights out. And the last thing I want to talk about is the grant that we received for municipal park, for the playground and the sidewalk and all that kind of stuff. We should be getting the playground equipment beginning of next week. So that should be installed before the end of the year. So the next two weeks, we'll have a playground, functional playground out there right by my splash pad. Part of the grant also that's paying this land and water conservation fund grant is we're going to put some sidewalks back there to get people from the splash pad and the parking lot to the playground and some picnic tables and things like that out in the back so it'll be a good area for recreation area for families. So we're working on the layout of park benches, pavilions, and things like that. And one of the other ideas that the Parks and Rec Committee has been kicking around is a outdoor structure to hold city events and allow for community use. We've got a master plan on the project. I think you guys have a copy of it on your books. But property over there, we have 30 some odd acres of property that the only thing we have in use at this point is the disc golf course, the 18 hole disc golf course, and the splash pad. So the Parks and Rec Committee over the past few months have met and talked about different things and different ideas that we believe the citizens would like to have out there in a municipal park. And so we've got a master plan that's got different kind of fields, soccer fields, baseball fields, tennis courts, just different things like this. And this is a 10-year plan to just have us, for us to have something to go by. And we can knock off a little bit at a time. One of the next things that we wanted to introduce to the council is an outdoor structure that could be used for city events. We don't know the size, and we don't have anything planned yet on it. We just want to start talking about it because that's something that the city can use and that the community could use. I think it'd be a good project. So you'll probably be hearing more about that once the committee gets together and comes up with some schematics and some plans.
Good.
Any questions?
I think, go ahead, Mr. Pla.
I would want about the bid on the double face, two faces sign. We're going to open the bids up in here in the public council meeting.
We don't typically do it with a council meeting. I guess we can.
We do it either way. It's not, that's not the normal way, but it can be done that way.
That's fine with me if that's what you want to do.
Normally, you open them in a special meeting with your, with your Public Works people.
Yeah, normally, we have it here, and we have all the people that are bidding. And we, the city clerk will read out the bids. Everybody's there.
That's fine.
They can ask questions. It kind of, it could happen, probably in a work session or something, but it's...
You need to open it. People that are bidding are going to want to see, you know, find out what's going on. And then somebody needs to take, instead of moving on right that second, you need to take it back, make sure they did all their paperwork right and all that sort of stuff. Then bring it before the council. But it's certainly, you know, open to the public. But you could do it in the council meeting if you wanted to. It'd be a little chaotic maybe.
There's a lot of back and forth. Contractors have questions. So I don't know if this is the event, this is the venue for that. But it's open to the public. It's advertised. Anybody can come.
Mr. Pla. Mr. Franklin loves for me to locate him about this thing. It's been on the table for so long. So firstly, I think whatever would expedite it is what we need to do. It's been a long time.
Yes.
Whatever would expedite it. And Mr. Webb, unless you just absolutely like to see that happen, I don't have a problem with that.
Will the contract go to the lowest bidder?
Lowest responsible bidder. So it may not necessarily be the lowest bidder. It'd be the one that meets the requirements the best.
Would we know who that would be before?
I think it takes a little time to go through all the paperwork to make sure that the prices are, there's no items that have been missed and to read everything. I don't think it's something you can make a decision on right away, like council said.
If we don't do it in the council meeting, make sure Mr. Webb's made aware where they're going to open envelopes.
Sure.
So he can be there. Okay. But that's not going to happen until mid-January?
Yeah, it's like January 12th, I believe.
Okay.
So if we do want to do it, we need to have a special meeting.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. We can also talk about this at our first January meeting too.
Sure.
All right. Any other questions for Public Works? Oh, just to say, we have had a pretty good response to the new intersection. Didn't get a lot of questions about it. People seem to be adjusting to it. And that's with any new thing. But the intersection now, we're talking about the one at 98 McCrory and Wolf. The computers are now running the lights, and so they're not, they're not on for a long, long time. They move on, so I feel good about it. So I think we're getting there, and people are happier. And the store owners I've talked to lately seem to be pleased with the way that the crowds are coming, so.
Well, if y'all was there with Vernon the other night when I pulled out from Walmart, I saw them brick, them concrete things. I said, "Oh, my God." You know, I said, "What is this?" And I think somebody else had mentioned it some time ago that they were upset about. You know, trying to, I was trying to figure out how to get off Wind Dixie. You know?
That's the first I've heard of it, Mr. Watts.
Oh, no. I know. Okay. Just be facetious.
Well, somebody on the day took a drive over that concrete.
Yeah, you drove over.
One guy said, "I saw somebody turn left."
Yeah, I was.
They were eastbound, went over the concrete pad there.
Yeah.
Going to Wind Dixie.
Yeah. I'm sure that that'd probably be taken out sooner or later. Might all it is, but I don't know.
Hey, Aldott said that was not a big problem. They can take it out. We'll find out.
They were going to look at the records after 30 days, yeah, two more weeks.
If it comes to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on. The first discussion review of a proposed ordinance involves the South Alabama Purchasing Association. This would be an ordinance, if it's approved during the regular meeting, to enter into intergovernmental agreement with the South Alabama Purchasing Association. The cost of this is $750 a year. But what it does, it allows us to presumably save money on wireless services, cell phones, devices, fuel dispensing, petroleum products, hurricane supplies, office supplies, equipment furnishing, vehicle parts, and batteries. There's substantial savings in this, and quite a few of our fellow cities, as well as Mobile County, are involved in this program. It is, in my opinion, similar to the HGAC, which we're going to talk about later, is it helps us streamline some processes and some procedures. It helps us comply with state bid laws and save money at the same time, which I think we all want to do. Because we buy a lot of supplies over the course of the year, and of course, the year, and if we can save money doing that, and with a legitimate Sarcsy-sponsored operation, this and the HGAC, then I think it would be a good thing. They handle, the SAPA group, Item May, under the ordinance, they handle researching and contacting vendors, advertising of bids when required by law, writing bid specs, scheduling and conducting bid openings, tabulating bids received, posting on the Sarcsy-SAPA website, coordinating the membership vote to accept or reject bids, and writing and executing the contract between SAPA and the selected vendor. So it's a pretty good program. And I'd be glad to give you, counsel, one of these Rochelle of 6A. Yes, sir.
Who brought this to the city?
The SAPA. That would have been Jason.
Okay.
Jason brought it up. And I think it's a good plan. It complies with the bid laws and it saved us some money, which was two things that we want to do. Yeah. All right. Any other questions on that, sir?
What is the cost of this?
750 a year.
Per year?
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Moving on. The next one is a resolution authorizing installation of an LED light and the reoccurring monthly operating cost for the City of Sims Public Safety Training Facility. It's also the site where Bishop State teaches classes. As you're probably aware, it's rather dark out there in front of the public training facility. And this authorization, I think it's about $70, something like that. What was it called?
Seventy more.
Yeah, $70. It would provide a significant light source in front of that building. And it's also beneficial to the fire department. It's also beneficial to other people visiting the fire training center after 5:00 during the winter because it's pitch black out there. So not tremendous amount of money, but of course, something needs to come to the council for their approval.
Was I adding nothing wrong there?
Oh, yes, sir. It's 7A. It should be in your packet.
Resolution.
Yeah. You see it? Item 7A.
My 7A is a check that's frozen. Something new you gave me.
Yes, sir. It should be. Look at the bottom, 7A.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions about 7A? Okay. Moving on. Next is resolution authorizing agreement to join the cooperative purchasing program HGAC by Chief Brooks. Mentioned this to us not long ago. And this is an operation similar to the intergovernmental agreement with South Alabama Purchasing regarding purchasing fire trucks and fire truck support systems. I mean, it's, Chief, not only do they help with bidding out for fire trucks, they also help out with other items, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
They, communications equipment, fire equipment, and Public Works.
A wide variety of areas. And this would, again, save money and allow us to use a legitimate source and stay in compliance with the bid law, which is of course important to us. But, and I think Mr. Platt's talked about this before, and I support it. Are there any questions about Item B? Yes, sir.
Is there any restriction on us using other sources, other than this?
No. No. It's basically a bid service. They will present to us at some point a bid, and they will say, "Company X has agreed to build this fire truck at your specification for this amount. We can take it or leave it." The cost for this program is zero. There's nothing to join this program. If by the same token, we get another bid from Company B saying that we can purchase this fire truck for less money, then we go with the lesser bid. So it gives us options, right, Chief? It gives us options while still following the law and staying in touch with the bid laws, which we have to do. So, does that answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else on Item B, Resolution B? Okay. The next item is Item C, Authorization for the Expenditure Funds for Comprehensive Assessment of Municipal Operating Procedures, Research, and Future Vision Planning. This is an initiative to give us some, a look to the future in terms of how we want to develop standard operating procedures, how we want to develop future goals, future items as we move forward. And I think Mr. Platt's talked about this in previous meetings. But we're about to enter the year 2018, and the idea of having a consultant come in and help us for 60 days would provide us some help on getting these SOPs and future vision initiatives underway. So that said, are there any questions about Item C? Yes, sir.
Do we have an opinion from City Council on this agreement? Item C is...
Okay.
City Council apologies. There it is. Page two. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Good question. You meant our attorney, right? Any other questions? Moving on. The next item is, I'm sure you're familiar with Chapter Vent, Chaplain Vent Norris of Orchard Assembly. He contacted me and asked if he could serve as the chaplain for the City of Sims Municipal Fire Department. As you know, from time to time, the fire department will come upon a scene where unfortunately, people have been injured. They may, there may be deaths involved. There may be, emotions may be running high. And Pastor Vent offered his services, no charge, of course, to be the chaplain for the Municipal Fire Department. I talked to Chief Brooks. He thought it was a good idea. I believe we would find Pastor Vent to be an advantage. And it's a situation where he wants to do the job. And I think that's what you want in the chaplain. So that's basically what this resolution would be. Any questions on that? Good question. Very good. Next item is revised holiday schedule. There was a mistake made in terms of the last... There was a mistake made in terms of, the last two holidays for this year, they have not occurred yet. Let me see if I can find them, pages up. Let's see. Yes, if you'll turn to the holiday schedule, resolution twenty sixteen dash fifty-two, you'll notice where it says shift at the bottom, it should be December twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen, and December twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, okay. Wait a minute. The city clerk, you had indicated that the change was from December twenty-second.
Correct.
Okay.
Two thousand and sixteen.
Christmas Eve is Sunday.
Right.
Okay, so...
The correct holidays are December twenty-two and the previous year.
Yes, December twenty-two.
Okay.
Twenty-five, yeah.
So, the actual days that we're talking about, to make sure they are annotated correctly and changed, would be, Christmas Eve would be December twenty-second, twenty-seventeen is a city holiday, and Christmas Day, December twenty-fifth, twenty-seventeen. Okay, so that's what this revised schedule is talking about. So what we're trying to do is change it to the regular column, which is the middle column, the last two.
Correct.
Correct? Okay, very good. Okay. And then the last item on here, um, we're looking at, uh, if the council agrees to move the first council meeting in January one day over to accommodate, uh, New Year's Day, which is gonna be Monday, as opposed to having it on Tuesday, that would give the office staff and people traveling an opportunity to get back, so we would move the meeting one day over from Tuesday to Wednesday, three o'clock.
Look, what about our meeting? Installation of the first Monday?
What's that?
For the public works.
First Monday? Well, that's, that's New Year's Day.
We, we normally meet the first Monday, which I know about January first.
Yeah.
Tuesday would be the second, you moving it back, do we move our meeting back one day?
Well, you can, at what time do you have that meeting? You can move it a day, or you can...
Four o'clock, we have it at four o'clock on the, the first, you know, the first Monday.
You can leave it there or move it, yeah. As long as you post a notice on the...
You need to move it to the second.
Yes, sir. As long as you, when you make your motion, when you post it, you change it, yeah. When you put it in those public places where you have to put it out, just make sure you, you put it in a public place. Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. President, I, uh, pardon, I must have missed this, uh...
That's okay.
On the original.
Back to the, uh...
Back to the holiday schedule?
Yes.
For twenty-seventeen. Uh, I guess we're gonna have to, uh, talk with the, uh, city attorney about this, and it may be just something that we can forget about, but, uh, this says, "All city-paid employees," and down there, and it says, "And no such city employee shall receive compensation." Uh, that's got to exclude the, uh, fire department. Does it need to explicitly, uh, state that? Does this need to be rewarded?
Move it through, man.
Uh, okay, uh, item one, that the following eleven-day schedule for certain City of Sims employees, well, it's questionable who those certain's are, and, uh, number two, all city-paid employees covered by this resolution shall comply with holiday schedule, and no such city employee shall receive compensation for any holiday other than those authorized above. And that would, that would include the fire department, which it should not.
Well, I think, chief, we've talked about this before, when firemen, firefighters, for example, work on a holiday, they're compensated based on that working of that holiday, correct? We, 'cause we went through that, that gyration before, yeah.
Passed a resolution about a year ago addressing the, uh...
The fire department?
Yeah.
There was a temporary, not a temporary, but it only, uh, basically covered, um... Chief, can you explain what we did? It was a merit thing, that's all that we've done, isn't it, uh, for...
There's been adjustments since then, haven't there?
Well, I just wanna point it out, we can pass it over as long as people are aware that...
Yeah.
That does not include the fire.
Yeah, right. And it's, it's understood that the firefighters work twenty-four hours and forty at all, and they're, they're paid for, and they win those twenty-four hours to touch a holiday, 'cause we, we talked about that, I think, in detail several times.
Well, we have, and I'm not, I'm just...
Yeah, that's a good point, though.
Just pointing it out.
You're a good point. All right. Very good. Committee reports, finance.
Finance, the finance committee, um, hammered together an understanding about the way to go forward in terms of, uh, the money that we need to maintain in our, uh, what's, we all know is our rainy day fund, the officially known as the budget stabilization fund, the amount that we needed in that, and also the amount that we needed to move forward for our capital program, and we'll be, uh, expecting to deliver a finished copy of that to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Very shortly, uh, to support the plans that you have to announce for our development plans for the new year.
Okay.
And also, one year ago, uh, Mayor asked for an inventory to be developed, and the staff has indeed come up with this inventory, fourteen pages, fine spaced, amounted to, uh, four million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars, uh, gives it down to the penny there, but, uh, any case, uh, I want to present to you that, the staff has been working on that very diligently throughout the year, and it's a continuing project, but that's, uh, quite a bit of work that has been done by the staff to date.
You're right, quite a bit of work done, and, and as you can see from what Mr. Smith said, a considerable, considerable amount of money in here, and this captures all our equipment, right here, and of course, these will be made...
In the authority of the...
Yes, sir.
City-owned equipment.
Everything owned by the city, yeah. Everything owned by the city, and we'll give everybody a copy, but the total is four million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, and it's broken down by departments, yeah, by departments, and it has everything, tag number, description, serial number, cost by, so, pretty good. Okay. Very good. Mr. Lawshie, roadways and right-of-ways.
Well, we haven't, we only have one meeting a month, we had, you know, last report, so we had...
Right.
All I, I do know that the guys spend a considerable amount of time with the Christmas trees and that sort of thing, get your stuff taken care of. I know they do their ma, daily maintenance work, street cleaned and all that.
Right. Great job over the holidays, Christmas tree, everything parried, everything looked good.
They had the hands for that, that parade.
Who will? Any questions for Mr. Lawshie? All right. Public safety, Mr. Platt.
Um, we will have, um, the hopeful and the chief give theirs during the regular session.
Okay, so the fire department's report and the police department's report will be during the regular session. Very good. All right. Any questions for Mr. Platt regarding public safety? Moving on, Mr. Platt, you're still in business, parks wrecked and special events.
Um, we will cover that during the regular session.
Okay, very good. Are there any other council, legal council or staff comments? Yes?
Uh, I will be asking to go into executive session during the regular session so that we can discuss some personnel issues, and, uh, just wanted to make notice of that.
Okay, during the regular session?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless you would care to, I don't know, council, can we do it at any time, or...
Go into executive session at any time?
Yeah.
If it meets the criteria, you can do it.
Well, it's about personnel issues, do we do it, uh, regular session, work session, doesn't matter?
I don't think that matters.
All right.
Yeah, I'll leave that up to the mayor, just when you'd like to do it.
Unless, uh, there's an objection, we'll do that in the regular session?
That's fine.
Any objection? Okay. Very good. Any other council, legal council or staff comments? Any other business that might come before the meeting? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, maybe.
Uh, anybody that wanted to come before the council with a statement, or...
No, sir, that's the regular.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Regular meeting.
Thank you.
Public comments will be in the regular session.
Thank you.
We'll be adjourned.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Any opposed? We are adjourned, uh, till four P.M., about fifteen minutes, and then it is four P.M. Meeting is now called order. Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Roll call, ready, here.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Here.
Councilman Charles Watts.
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Here.
Councilman Lawrence Webb.
Here.
Councilman Lee Lawshie.
Here.
Good. All present? Very good. Next, we'll do the invocation and pledge, let's see, um, let's see, invocation, Ms. Byrd, would you mind doing the invocation? Mr. Dearman, would you lead us in the pledge? Okay. All right. First up is the invocation. All right.
Our Father, we thank you that you're our God, that you're King of kings and Lord of lords. We thank you for helping us to make the right decisions, Father, that things will go well for the, every decision that is made would be for the benefit of the citizens of Sims. And thank you, Father, for your wisdom beyond our years. We thank you that you are our God and that you change not, and that you're concerned about everything that we're concerned about, for your word says you know the very number of hairs on our head, so you're concerned for things, Father, and we thank you for that, and we just love you and praise you and are thankful for this season, we can celebrate your birthday, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
Bless the witness to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, both. All right. Item five is the first item, consideration of minutes from the regular council session, give you a minute to look at those.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good, the minutes from the regular session of December fifth, twenty-seventeen are approved. We have no presentations, I guess speakers do, are we, are we gonna do, uh, yes? Didn't you have the fire and the police report?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Did you wanna do that as a presentation?
No, sir, in fact, there will, there will be no presentation.
Okay, good, all right. That'll be next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The fire and police presentations will be the first meeting in January, and not today.
Yes, sir.
Next item is the financial report, approval of the checks for signature, we discussed those in the work session. Are there any other questions regarding approval of checks for the signature for today's regular session?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
All right. Mayor Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Charles Watts.
Yeah.
Councilman Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilman Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. The checks are approved for this regular session. Okay, the first item, first ordinance, is an ordinance to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, South Alabama Purchasing Association. We discussed this during the work session, is there a motion for immediate consideration?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote.
All right. Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Charles Smith.
Yes.
I mean, Charles Watts, I'm sorry. Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
And Councilman Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good, this is the ordinance we discussed, uh, that gets us into this organization, which should benefit us in terms of savings regarding wireless services, cell phones, fuel dispensing, petroleum products, hurricane supplies, office supplies, vehicle parts and batteries, the cost is seven hundred and fifty dollars per year. Quite a few of our fellow municipalities, as well as the Mobile County Commission, use this operation, and it's sponsored by Sarcsy. So, are there any other questions regarding ordinance eight A?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Charles Watts.
Yeah.
Councilman Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good, that one is approved. The next group of resolutions, we have, uh, resolutions A, B, C, D, E. Is the resolution regarding the change of the date, would that be F?
Yes, that would be F, yes.
Okay. Uh, you'll note one, one change, resolution F changes the first meeting of twenty eighteen from January second to January third. Okay, of twenty eighteen. Okay. Is there a motion for immediate consideration for resolutions A through F?
So, move.
Second.
Okay, um, roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Charles Watts.
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
And Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. First item for discussion is a resolution authorizing installation of the LED light and reoccurring monthly operating cost for City of Sims Training Center, Bishop State Sem site. This is a light we talked about during the regular session, as you know, especially during the winter months, when you go over to the public training safety center, it's pretty dark out front, and this would provide an additional light for, for safety and for, for other reasons. Cost would be about seventy dollars, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, of course, whatever the resulting cost would be for month for the light. Any discussion further on resolution nine A?
What is the, um, wattage on that light you, what size, um, light is that?
We asked the engineer to, we told them what they wanted, and that's what they, the square footage that we, we need lit up, I don't know exactly what it is.
The entire parking?
Yes, five thousand square feet, and, uh, they recommended this based on what we needed. I don't know the exact amount of dimensions.
Okay.
It would light up the front, pretty good. Yes, sir.
I think it's also important to note that the last time we were there, uh, you know, even the areas to the west of this area were, were dark, and, uh, Mr. Franklin, um, has decided that when we have an event like that in the area that's not lit, uh, lit up, um, then he will put up those portable, whatever you call them.
Portable light, yeah.
To light those areas, but this is really, I think, safety in, in such extent as we have the, the students there, and of course, it's good for everybody, but, um, they intend to light up the whole area when needed, so, that's all I have on that.
Any further discussion?
Move, we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Charles Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. Very good. Next item is resolution 9B. This is a resolution authorizing agreement to join the cooperative purchasing program, the HGAC Buy. There is no cost for this. Uh, the advantage is, I think we talked about during the, the work session, it gives us another venue, another way to, um, exercise the bid process, which is important to us. And it gives us another, another way to see cost of bidding. For example, we're looking at a mini pumper. The council approved funding for a mini pumper, uh, a month or so ago. And this will give us another vetting process and another bid process for that. So I support this. I think anything we can do, um, that's correctly done will benefit us. So, any questions regarding resolution 9B?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Charles Watts.
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. Moving on. We talked about item C during the regular session, or during the work session, sorry. This is an authorization for the expenditure funds for a comprehensive assessment of municipal operating procedures, research and future vision planning. Uh, this is basically looking forward into the years 2018, 2019 and beyond, making sure that our operating procedures are, uh, comprehensive, all-inclusive, are sensitive to all the, the, uh, changes that are going on in the world today, and just getting us on track and keeping us on track, so that we don't, uh, go down the wrong highway. Any questions? Any further questions about item C?
Move we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Charles Watts.
Yeah.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Epstein.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. That's approved. Next item is resolution appoint a fire department chaplain for the City of Sims Municipal Fire Department. As we talked about during the work session, Pastor Vint has offered his services to the City of Sims Municipal Fire Department for those unfortunate, rare events. We hope they're unfortunate and rare when people are in need of, uh, a chaplain at a, an accident scene or a fire incident. And he's offered to do this for us. There's no cost to the city. And I appreciate his, his attitude about it. So that's what this is regarding item D. Any questions regarding item D?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Charles Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Next item is revised holiday schedule for 2017. We are basically changing the last two, I think it's the last two days that were approved for city holidays, uh, to correctly reflect what is on the calendar. Christmas Eve is the 22nd. Is that right? That's a Friday. And Christmas Day is a Monday, the 25th. And the revised holiday schedule would reflect that. Are there any questions regarding that?
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilman Charles Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. The last item is, uh, moving the first city council meeting of 2018 over one day uh, to account for the fact that the 1st of January is a city holiday. And the 2nd would put an undue strain on the city staff getting ready for a council meeting. Plus, there are quite a few holiday events going on during that time. Uh, any further discussion on moving the council meeting over one day?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
That's actually adopting all of the meeting dates for 2018.
Is it?
Yes, sir.
Which that is one of.
Okay. And I think they were all listed there with them.
Yes, sir. The minus one in the back.
Yes, okay. Yes. This would be approving all of the council meeting dates for 2018. And January 3rd, January 16th. I'll read them all. February 6th, February 20, March 6th, March 20, April 3rd, April 17th, May 1st and 15th, June 5th and 19th, July 3rd and 17th, August 7th and 21st, September 4th and 18th, October 2nd, 16th, November 6th and 20th, and the 4th and 18th of December. And that's pretty much it. Any discussion on this item?
Move we approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mayor David Baker.
Yes.
Councilman Howard Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Charles Watts.
Yes.
Councilmember Terry Platt.
Yes.
Councilmember Lawrence Webb.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee Lawshie.
Yes.
Very good. That finishes all the resolutions. Is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Moving on to comments and announcements.
I have one.
Okay.
Mr. Mickey Dearman.
Okay, well, that's... You're talking about, uh, public comments?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is...
Okay.
Okay, we can do that now.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Dearman?
Yeah, probably already got a copy. Now, since we have six copies, we have...
I'll read that.
All right, how you doing?
Okay.
Oh, thank... Thank you all for your time.
Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas to y'all.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year to everybody. Uh, you know, we, we all know that when the, the fire department issue went down, uh, the previous administration, uh, I was called by several city of, uh, officials to see if there was something I could do. And I knew that there was, and, uh, you know, I, I went through the whole, the whole, through the courts, the whole nine yards, and, uh, basically footed the bill and for everything that, that had to be done there with, under the impression that I, you know, I was told that I wouldn't be left holding the bag with this. Uh, we've got almost $12,000 worth of money that there are receipts for. And this is not, you know, after going back and look, this is not paying Mr. Eddie Bexley $200 for all the locks that he changed. Uh, uh, the O'Reilly's bill, the welding officer, they wrecked the, uh, one D M R I had to have it welded. There are two people that did step up. Uh, I don't know if their names may want to be mentioned, but I'm gonna mention them anyway. Troy Jordan gave 1,500 and Miss Maxine Merrick gave $1,000. It doesn't count the decent mechanic that come in because I walked into this fire department not knowing if these trucks were, were running or anything. You know, so... Basically, I mean, $12,000 is a pretty good bit of money, you know, to me. I don't know about y'all. Uh, especially, you know, when, when I look at it, and I saved the, you know, the community and the, the, the city a bunch of money by... I'm not patting myself on the back. I don't want that to sound the wrong way, but, uh, I mean, this seems like a minute to, to, to what the equipment that y'all got back. Like I said, I was under the impression, you know, that, you know, when we talked, we had numerous, numerous meetings, uh, again, that I wouldn't be holding the bag. And, uh, also, I'd like to, you know, ask about the volunteer fire department's checkbook, where nobody could ever really give me an answer, uh, if that has been returned. And by that said, I'm gonna leave this question open for city council to maybe answer that, you know, if there's anything they can do to, to help absorb some of these fees that I paid out of my pocket. Like I said, I have receipts for, for everyone.
All right.
Thank you all again. I'm gonna leave it open.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, uh, Mr. President, uh, that inventory I delivered to you, I think it has, uh, over a million dollars' worth of, uh, fire department material that, uh, Mr. Dearman actually delivered over. Basically, the delivery gave the city. And, uh, we're just talking about, um, some really annoying, uh, small pickings here. I, I believe we have a moral responsibility to indemnify him for these out-of-pocket expenses. This is the least we can do for all the, uh, time and effort that, uh, he went through stepping forward to recover this equipment for the citizens of our area. So I would, uh, I would say we really need to take care of this immediately.
Well, I'll, I'll let our attorney counsel look at it and give us some comments. Yes, sir.
Oh. We have this, and we have a related issue. And as I've said before, uh, we keep saying, I'm gonna let so-and-so do the, I'm gonna let so-and-so. I, uh, counselor, do we need to go into executive session, uh, to discuss with you the legal services the city couldn't from your firm?
I don't want to do it.
That's... But I thought that was a legal question. I'm trying to find out why these things keep falling through the cracks. Somebody is not putting due effort in. This is not the only item that needs to be discussed. And there are attorney, uh, as far as I'm concerned, only an attorney can handle these things. And you and I have discussed this, and why, why, why is this and other things still?
Why is this letter from Mr. Dearman?
How long have we had this letter?
About five minutes.
Well, the first one I saw was several months ago.
We've given you my opinion on this at least twice.
Have you told the mayor?
Yes.
Somebody needs to let Mr. Dearman know, but if I remember correctly, I don't want to speak for the whole council, but I think the council decided that we were gonna do what was right, and we need to find out how to make it right. And yes, you did tell me that we could do some things, we could, uh, do other things. But we need to give Mr. Dearman an answer. I mean, explicitly give him an answer. And, uh, either do it or explain why not. And I don't, I, you know, the mayor is responsible for, uh, for failing what the council, uh, decides. I thought the council had decided.
Well, as I, as I understand it, this has not been entered in a council meeting as an agenda item. It could be put on the first council meeting in January as an agenda item and given due consideration.
Well, I'm saying to myself then, if that's all it's gonna take, um, I, you know, we have discussed it and discussed it, and there is another issue that we need to discuss that's we're all aware of, of, um, Mr. Jordan's situation.
Well, I think, Mr. Mr. Platt, you know, we can get, we can get into a general discussion here, or we can, we can follow the agenda, or we can wander off, all over, all over the creation.
Sometimes, Mayor, that's what it takes to get something done. I, I hate to wander off, but this is not, this is not cold news.
Yeah.
Neither one of these items, and I am...
Well, as he said, as the counselor said, this is the first time it's been presented to us formally as a council. We will put this item on the agenda for the January meeting, and we will discuss it. And based on what the council decides, we'll make a decision at that time.
Okay.
And I don't know any other way to put it.
Why, why do we have to wait till January? I mean, I, I'm just asking a question.
Well, essentially, it is a request for the city council, presumably of Sims, to spend taxpayer dollars on a, a matter, um, that occurred back in, back before we came on council.
Well, we need a comprehensive, uh...
And that's why we need to put it on the agenda to discuss.
Well, I, I, I can agree to that, but I mean, it's...
And I think that's what we should do. Because it's, it's, it's nice to say who may have thought this or that, who may have said this or that, but I think it actually needs to be on the council meeting in January as an agenda item. And then at that point, each and every one of you can say what you have to say.
Well, that's, uh, I, I can agree to that, and, um, that's...
We'll do that.
Can we add, uh...
Yes.
He has something he wants to say there.
I, I was just under the impression, you know, when I, when I talked to several of the council members, that it already went to city council. I mean, they're, I would have done a letter up here. Uh, and it was approved by city council, so... I'm, I'm not asking for nothing, but that's not my...
Well, Mr. Dearman, you're, you're correct. I was told to put it on the agenda last, and I did. And then, uh, the, uh, council, uh, legal council says that we can't do this. And I'm, I, I'm as much at fault as anybody, maybe more so, because I didn't pursue it. I just keep letting it drop too. But I think that you are due, uh, a full explanation of yes or no and why. And it looks like we're gonna have to put it on the next agenda. And I, I would like to add, uh, uh, Mr. Jordan's issue.
Need to put, you know, we need some papers.
Okay.
All right. Any other public comment? City clerk?
Yes. It's $11,710.80. That's what it costs you for us to recover the fire department operations that was in chaos.
Yes, sir. I left some stuff off, but, uh, I didn't put Troy's on there, and I didn't put Miss Maxine Merrick's on there, which if, if that's what y'all decide, I'll pay for that out of my pocket. Uh, I forgot about the O'Reilly's bill. I mean, it happened, they called me the day that this was supposed to go to court and said, hey, look, we've got to mediate. They gave in, you know, this, that and the other. And my only thing was that, you know, that I was to be repaid for the expenses that I have receipts for since I took it over because the night I took it out, I mean, I made sure Chief Brooks had everything. As soon as I opened the doors, I made sure Chief Brooks had everything he needed. The night that I opened that door, we had one pinned up under a car here, and they didn't even have a set of jaws or lock. I mean, nothing to, to, to do what they did. If they needed something, they, they didn't hesitate. I mean, they'd call me anytime. I, I, you know...
It will be on each other. It will be on each other in January.
We need to make, uh, make things right with him because of the... Well, if the chief, he could tell you something about what it was like before and what it's like now.
I would like to say that I appreciate you and your family and...
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Everything that, you know, personally, I, I, I had never met you before, but you're a great guy and y'all family is definitely an asset in Sims community.
And that's not what I look at. I'm not looking at a bad boy. You know what I mean? I just, just, you know, it's special time, and if I had a tip of what everybody thought I had, I wouldn't even be up here asking for it. You know what I'm saying? But, uh...
Um, did, did you still wish executive session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, to go into executive session, first of all, are there any other public comments? To go into executive session, we have to meet certain guidelines. I guess I will defer to our attorney.
I spoke with Mr. Platt about the topic, which is the personnel matter based on job performance. And, uh...
Does it meet the requirement?
It meets the requirements, yes, on the particular topic.
Counselor, do you need more time on that second one? Am I, am I...
Do you want my opinion?
Yes, sir.
Right now? You can't pay his legal fees.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, the, the other paperwork I gave you concerned Chief Brooks?
I'm not sure what the question is on that.
Can we discuss that in an exa- executive session, or...
I can't answer that without knowing what the question is.
All right, well, I'll get, we, we'll take a little break before executive session.
Do you want to recess for...
Five minutes?
We'll recess for five minutes. Is there a motion to recess for five minutes?
Yes, you're welcome.
Just one more thing, and I've asked this question several times, and I still haven't got the, the checkbook. Uh, because the, the, what's his name? Attorney General. Attorney General, we called him. Uh, nobody knows where this checkbook is. It's got $32,800 in it. Last I've noticed, it was, it was in the previous...
Counsel.
The Sims Volunteer Fire Department is a separate corporation from the city, just like Walmart and Exxon are separate corporations. It was run by a board of which, I believe, Mr. Hale was the, uh, ostensible head of the board. Mr. Dearman filed a lawsuit to obtain control of that organization. The decision of who was in charge was never determined by the court. They just basically folded their cards in the end, turned everything over to the city. But that is still, to my knowledge, I haven't looked at it since the case ended, because it really was not my concern, was still a separate corporation with their own separate checkbook. And as far as I know, still in the hands of whoever the Hales or whoever it was that had it. And they also had control of that bank account. And what happened to it, we just got their, their equipment.
And the reason I, I asked that, I'm sorry, is that, that it was to be said with the attorney that any existing bills that were to be paid was, was to be paid out of that check, which would actually save the city, you know, some money, because they, the volunteer fire department should pay the...
Well, I understand that, but he's, he just, he just said that that's a, that's not under our purty, that's not under our control.
Yeah, Mr. Dearman, I believe that's beyond us.
That's beyond us.
Probably be your attorney or...
Yeah.
Even the judge. You know?
Okay. Is there still a motion for executive session?
Do we need to... You wanted to ask about this other?
Yeah, let's take a, a five-minute recess if we like, before executive session.
We can do that. Is there a motion for a five-minute recess?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, opposed, we'll take a five-minute recess. Finished the recess, um, five-minute recess, we are now back in regular session for the city council regular meeting of December 19th. Yeah, let me get my papers straight here.
Counselor, you think I need to, um, say what this is about, what we...
The, the first, uh, issue we discussed about the discussing the job performance and all that of the certain employee, that's perfectly fine for an executive session and is appropriate. The second issue, uh, I'm gonna go check on and get back with Mr. Platt. And then it'll be, if it needs to come up, some other...